The purpose that we are here before you this afternoon is to report our position as it relates to that of the Talbot Boys statue. The statue is a Confederate statue erected on public grounds of the Talbot County courthouse. It is offensive to have this presence there. It is also offensive to advocate for the continuance of a reality that was abolished in 1863, and it is equally offensive to allow the continuance of commemoration that represents sex infopride. The Confederate flag is not only offensive, but the very act the Confederates chose to perform made their behavior an act of treason. Is this reality something we want memorialized on the courthouse ground? You decide. This statue represents people who seized arms against the United States government, and because of this, it is imperative that the symbols placed on the courthouse grounds should be properly represented as a reminder of nobility, and that cannot be that of representation or misrepresentations of the Civil War. Across from the Talbot Boys statue stands the Frederick Douglass statue. Mr. Douglass was an avid abolitionist who fought against the inhumane treatment of people in the 1800s. He fought against the appalling treatment back then, and we are still fighting against it in the year 2015. This should not be. As a member of the Frederick Douglass Honor Society, at the time of the erection of the statue, I remember some obstacles that we had to cope with. When presenting our findings, the council said the statue should not be taller than that of the Talbot Boys statue, that the base of the statue was too big that we presented. Obstacles were present, but then so was perseverance. The erection of the monument was accomplished, and this undertaking can be accomplished again with proper planning and cooperative people. The NAACP is willing to unite with anybody to do right, but with nobody to do wrong. We say as a united front to do all we can to do right or wrong. President Pach, Councilman Derek Bartlett, Councilwoman Laura Price, Councilwoman Jennifer Williams, and I don't see Mr. Kelly in.
He's on the town right now.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration of our petition. We are requesting that you consider this appeal with your hearts and not judge your minds, that you apply empathy and fairness when making your decisions, and we hope that your aspirations will be to do the right thing, because the right thing is the right thing to do.
There is a saying that if you go something like this, there is no greater force than an idea whose time has come, and that it's never too late to do the right thing regardless of the past wrong that might have been done. So consistent with those thoughts, the recommendation of NAACP, one, to remove the statue from the courthouse lawn and place it in a more appropriate setting, and second, to commission a group of Talbot County citizens who can reasonably discuss the erection of a new statue that is inclusive of the Union and Confederate soldiers of the Civil War. Thank you.
The history of the statue, and I did some research myself, and there were competing voices at that time in 1913, whether there should be a statue of both the Republican Democrats, both the Confederates and the Union soldiers, and as you said, those voices of the Confederacy won out, and thus we have the statue here. There is a twin statue, if you didn't know, also of the Talbot Boys statue in Louisiana. There were two statues made. The one in Louisiana was erected in 1915. This one was placed here in 1915, dedicated in May of 1916, I believe you said, or June, but I think it was May of the next year. So there's another statue similar to this one in Louisiana. I know that there was a concentrated effort, some 50 years after the Civil War in the early 1900s, to go into the North and do monuments of Confederate soldiers. I think in Kentucky, there's some 22 different monuments, only two, I believe, for the Union directed for Confederates. Confederate soldiers, in 1958, I believe, the United States government recognized the Confederate soldiers as veterans of war. So there was no distinction between veteran soldiers of the Confederacy and veteran soldiers of the Union. They're both considered by Congress to be veterans of war. I do think that there's a strong difference between forcing a flag up of an enemy. I've never thought that any public capital, whether it be in a state or federal, should ever put up a combatant's flag. The history behind the flag in South Carolina being placed here was after 1965, I believe, after President Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act. Almost in defiance of that, the Congress in South Carolina placed the flag over top of the Capitol. It was immediately protested, it was immediately protested by members of the community, and it was moved to its current location until Governor Nikki Haley courageously headed it moves. And I certainly salute her and appreciate her efforts in getting that flag brought down. It had never been placed there to begin with. So I do certainly take position that Confederate flag should not be thrown on any governmental property. The statue, I believe, we need to maybe look a little further into what it exactly said about our history. Even in Annapolis, we have Justice Tany, his statue, if you know, Justice Tany was the justice who signed the Dred Scott decision, and of course, we do know the horrors of the Dred Scott decision and how that case played out in history, basically saying that Americans had no rights, they had no position to be heard in court, and Mr. Scott had no right to claim that he was free, although he had ran away from his master in the United States of Illinois, which were free at the time. But both Justice Tany and Justice Servant Marshall, both those statues are in place in Annapolis, and are both depicting the history of this country, good, bad, and ugly. You know, there's a history to be told. And I know there were some asking for Justice Tany's statue to be brought down. I believe the governor has already spoken to that point that he's not inclined to do that. So what, and I do understand your position, but when we're talking about the history and how statues, and you talk about bringing your niece down, and I had my granddaughter here just the other day on the courthouse grounds looking at both statues, and I wanted to get an up close look for myself. There are many people who walked by that statue for the last hundred years and probably never noticed the Talbot Boys statue at all, never noticed. I had to drop somebody over here last week to actually show them where it was, so they didn't know where it was. So again, traveling in South Carolina and what that flag represented over governmental body, I don't think any reasonable person, any reasonable person would say that that flag should remain flying over top of a governmental body. Monuments to veterans, though, do they have a place in society? That's my question, sir.
I think they have a place when you're telling the entire story. As we see that monument today, it's only depicting one side of the story.
With the Douglass statue, and you know, I was strongly asking for that statue, myself and Delegate Jenny Hadaway, Mayor Willie, there was combined effort, if you remember, who got that statue erected here. With the Douglass statue, bringing your niece and my granddaughter to the courthouse ground, would it be fair to tell both sides of that story using both of those statues symbolically?
When you look at Douglas and Talbot Boys, to me, that's comparing apples and oranges.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
When we look at Douglas, Douglas was an orator, he was an educator, so there's motivation there, there's perseverance there. Anybody can look at that statue and glean that message from that statue. Anybody can glean a message, that positive message. So monuments are supposed to inspire us profoundly. Douglas does that. Talbot Boys, I can't look at that. Those are the same men that would have me enslaved for being, we're sitting in this building today.
Maybe it's not telling two sides of the story, but it's telling Frederick Douglass as a continuance of you see where it was, and someone like him, and where it went. So not every monument necessarily is going to be inspiring. Maybe some things have to bring home the pain of what happened, but with him right next door, you see what he became and how wonderful, you know, his life was and how many lives that he touched. So while it's maybe not two sides of the same story, it is one story that has a continuation ending with a very inspiring individual.
I hear your point, but I disagree. Again, two sides of the Civil War, the Union and the Confederate. I think we can all agree that that statue represents the Confederate side. I think the documents that you have, the Royal Historical Trust, classifies that monument as a Confederate monument. So my question then becomes, where's the monument to the Union soldiers?
Well, again, and you know the history as well, that those voices were not represented or they were...
But is that fair?
Well, that's history. We're just talking about history, good, bad, ugly. That's just the history of it. But there were two competing voices at the time in 1913. Those persons representing Confederate side, for whatever reason, took a vote, or they were more of them, or whatever case it be, you and I weren't there, thank you very much. But we do know that those voices of the Union side did not win out, and therefore, there weren't statues of both the Union and the Confederacy on the courthouse ground. Would it be great if it was, and I think we both would agree, to have both sides represented? There were more Union soldiers in Talbot County than there were Confederate soldiers.
Absolutely. And I think now is the time to make the story right. I think we're sitting here amongst an august body of educated individuals, so why wouldn't we make the story right?
I guess I'm a little more perplexed than anything, because I was president of the county council when we unveiled the Frederick Douglass statue, and I remember many discussions and debates about the formation of that statue and how it came to be. And believe me, it was a difficult task to get accomplished. And I recall that that day that we unveiled that statue was one of the most remarkable historical days, I believe, and I would argue, in Talbot County history. And I remember, I remember how everybody came together. Once the statue was determined what it was going to be, they pulled together, and in a unified and beautiful mission, we unveiled a significant statue that everyone was proud of. Even the family, the slaveholding family of Frederick Douglass was attending those events. A more gracious and symbolic act, and lady, you'll never see again, somebody who could basically come together. I think we had a remarkable achievement in a beautiful day where the community was energized, proud, and the term balance was used at the time, that that statue was balancing the Talbot Boys statue in many ways, not just symbolically, but even the consultant who was working with the Frederick Douglass Honor Society believed that the two statues should relate to each other in terms of size. And I would argue that that Frederick Douglass statue has a much greater statue, because there's more bronze, it's a larger figure, and the granite monument is smaller, which was, I think, a smart thing to do by the sculptor, because it creates a very commanding presence out on that lawn. I gave a speech about the symbolic connection between the Y oak tree, which I thought represented the slaveholding families, the Y plantation, and there was this new statue coming onto this green. And the relationship between that tree and that statue going forward into the future, that that tree would provide shade for the statue, that they would be both sitting out there in the rain and the sleet and the cold together. In the end analysis, we all, whether you are African American or non-African American, we all exist together in this community. And my speech had to do with the future and how I thought that this was a momentous occasion for Talbot County. Not that we would forget the past, we certainly can't. And in my discussions with people about the Talbot Boys statue, you can see the pain right on the surface. You don't have to get very far into the discussion to understand the aversion that some people have to the Confederate flag. And as Corey says, I agree with him, it should never fly over government property, but even the fact that individuals choose to fly that flag is offensive, and I believe we can all agree, any reasonable person can agree that that flag should go away. But my point is that that particular day, I thought Talbot County had gotten past the past, and that we were unveiling a new future for the races in the community to work together and to move forward together. And what puzzles me is that maybe it just wasn't as significant as I thought. The fact that we're going to go back and fight the Talbot Boys statue battle as if the Frederick Douglass statue was never unveiled. I consider that that Frederick Douglass statue was the very thing that put in proper perspective the Talbot Boys statue. If that statue were just simply to disappear, the average person who might come to visit the courthouse may never know the tortured history that this county had with respect to slavery. My own ancestors were from outside of the area, and they came here, and they were considered heretics, because they had released their family slaves. In fact, of the two people who voted for Abraham Lincoln, my great-grandfather was one of them. You never know, the ballot box is secret, but that's the legend in his family.
That's the story you're sticking with.
Well, I mean, he was hated by his neighbors, and he hired people and paid them wages. The whole town of Unionville was formed from him. He said, "I'll give everyone here land as long as you help me build a church and a school, and everyone can live here," and they have, happily ever after, for a lot of years. And I get it, that it is a painful history here in Talbot County, but I also get that I thought we had resolved at least part of the pain, and that we could go forward. I saw your interview with the Talbot Spy, and it was as if everything that you said, you never really talked about the Frederick Douglass statue. And I'm thinking to myself, I'm in a parallel universe. I thought we had done a lot of work. I grant you that the whole process of getting a statue was very difficult and very painful, but in the end analysis, and it took compromise.
The issue here today, though, it was like we're mixing apples and oranges. It's not, you agree, at this point, we don't need to pit one statue against the other. Philosophically, we're raising a point about whether that statue is properly placed, and if whatever, if it depicts what actually happened here. What it says is that the Confederate soldiers had more money. Okay. I mean, that's basically what you have a message.
Well, but what puzzles me is that you're suggesting we put up another monument that depicts both Confederate and Union soldiers on one monument. If indeed the Confederate soldiers were traitors, why would you erect another monument to them?
We'll tear it down and just put up the Union soldiers. So let's not dance around the issue here. The issue here, the Civil War was fought to maintain slavery, and we can talk about the economics of die and die, and we know that slavery fueled the economic system of this country, particularly in the South. That statue is offensive. That statue represents a group of persons, and with all due respect, see, I'm a combat trained Army officer. Fortunately, I never had to go into combat, but I was trained to go in and kill or be killed, and it was frightening just to be in training, let alone going into combat. So I understand the concern about soldiers who died in combat. That's not what we are talking about. But the cause for which the Confederate soldiers fought was to keep my ancestors in bondage, and ancestors of a lot of folk in there in bondage, and you, Mr. Bartlett, and nobody else, do not share that experience, and it just carried over. We still see signs of racism, and although I don't know, because I wasn't around at that time, contrary to what some of my friends might think. The reason, perhaps, the reason, has some racist motivation why that statue's up there and didn't include the Union soldiers. Give me one good reason why a statue would be up there depicting the Civil War and you put the Confederate soldiers and not the Union soldiers.
Well, maybe what you need to do is have someone commission a Union soldier and continue to tell those sides, but to take one down and replace it with the Union side, again, now you're still only talking about that.
No, that's not what we said. Our recommendation was to make it inclusive of Union and Confederate soldiers, and if we want to depict history as it happened, we would have just that, something that includes the Union and Confederate soldiers of the Civil War. Why not have a Civil War statue? That would include everybody, and that should make everybody happy. I'm not happy, personally, I'm not happy for any inclusion of the Confederacy, because what it did to me and my ancestors, it broke up black families, blacks later on that met, they married each other, because they did not know that they were relatives. My great-grandfather, Robert Gordy, was on the plantation in Pittsville, Maryland. Slave, look, why weren't other folks of ethnic background enslaved? Only black people. Why? Because of the color of our skin.
But your group recommends a new statue that depicts both sides of the Civil War country.
Sure, that is correct.
And I don't understand that.
I'm sorry. It shouldn't be too hard for anyone to understand, sir.
You already have a statue that depicts one side of the story.
No, Frederick Douglass, not that...
No, I'm not talking about Frederick Douglass, I'm talking about the Talbot Boys. It already represents the Confederate side.
Well, would you be real that we put another statue reflecting the Union?
Well, I would think that would be the message you would have, but what I'm hearing is you want to eliminate the Confederate statue and replace it with a joint Union-Confederate statue, and that, to me, I don't understand that.
Well, are you, would you be real for a Union monument over there?
Possibly, but the Confederate monument would be still there in that scenario.
Plus, there are issues with...
And would that be acceptable to the NAACP?
Well, that's part of their recommendation point, too, is a new statue inclusive of Union and Confederate soldiers.
I suppose I get that, but we've already got the Confederate box checked. If you have to have that represented, it's already there.
Right, we should hold a new statue, would you say?
Right, I mean, because there are issues with the way it's built, it's fragile, moving it, you could end up destroying it. You have to find a home. Some of the suggestions for where it can go, I, no, they're not interesting. So there's, I mean, you have to kind of figure out, first off, if there'd be a place for it that would be appropriate, because I don't think that you should just scrap it, because it is part of history, whether people, you know, obviously, nobody likes it, but it needs to go somewhere. But maybe the easier answer is to at least have conversations of, is there a spot to do its opposite on the grounds? And leave that one there, because it's history there. Again, it's heavy, it's hard, it's expensive to move, it's fragile, it's not, I don't think it's solid.
Well, it's in very good shape for a 100-year-old statue.
Right, but it's not like the solid thing, I mean, one of the things that we got from Brian Moore was that if you were to put probably weight on it, it's ridiculous. So I mean, you don't want to destroy it, I mean, maybe you do, but... Well, what I'm saying is, you know, if people, nobody has said destroy it, everybody has said move it someplace. Well, you have to, of course, figure out the feasibility of that and whether or not it would be still in one piece if you were to do that, but maybe the conversation is to be, just have a conversation about potentially putting up a Union one nearby.
I think that what this meeting suggested is that you, we could debate this back and forth, there are 50,000 alternatives. Just appoint a mission to explore the possibilities of what can be done, what is economically feasible, what it would cost to do X, Y, and Z, and then we can all redis... But we, you know, we don't have a concrete plan, and we talk, let's do this, let's do that, or what if? Well, why don't you do that? Consider appointing a mission to explore this entire issue, recognizing that something needs to be done. The Congressman Bartlett, Congressman, maybe that's right.
All in good time.
Talks about conciliation. It is very true. I think everybody in this room was properly present at that Frederick Douglass ceremony. It's very moving, because it brought the community together. It still did not address the appointment in Talbot County. There are so many other visible signs of disparities in this community that we need not broach that.
I agree.
This is just an effort, again, in terms of putting together our community, so as Joe Toran actually said this to me some time ago, "We can't control what goes on in Washington, but we can control what goes on in our community." And if we, we can agree that we need to acknowledge in some way that an injustice was done when that statue was put there, or whatever way you choose to frame that, and decide how you're going to address it. That's what we're at. We can't risk over it.
My only, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but my thought is that the monuments that are out there, and this was the genesis of my article to the paper, that it tells the story of Talbot County, as the good and the bad, as Corey said, and as I said in that article. And the triumph of Frederick Douglass is a wonderful story, that a slave could rise to the heights of fame and respect that that man rose to, from being, starting out where he started out. And to me, and combining with the work we did on the library, trying to create a place where people could study his life, could learn about him, in the very county where he grew up, that was the real message of Frederick Douglass, was by learning you could pull yourselves up and achieve things in life. And if you look at the disparities that exist in our society, and we see it all every day, and I agree with you, they are right here, in essence, that message is the answer. It's why we did that connection to the library. We thought through those things, and we thought, this is the proper answer to the past.
All due respect to Mr. Douglass. Mr. Douglass statue is not a substitute for doing the right thing with regard to the Civil War, with regard to recognizing the... Civil War, with regard to recognizing the Union soldiers. Now, the way to do that, that we have made a recommendation that erection of a new statue that is inclusive of the Union and Confederate soldiers of the Civil War, if I understood you correctly, sir, you have an idea about, well, let's put another statue there and leave the present statue? Okay. Well, I mean, these are things can be talked about, but the option of doing nothing is not an option.
Well, and that's my puzzlement, because I don't believe we've done nothing. I was president of the county council when we unveiled a significant statue on the courthouse grounds, and it was, it is a national symbolic statue that people come from all over the country to see, to learn about Frederick Douglass, and it is a major, major event, and was a major event when it was unveiled in 2011. It was historic. And when you combine that with the history here of the area of the hill and the other significant historical events, the Union soldiers from Unionville who fought on the Union side, you have so many stories that you can tell here in Talbot County that are absolutely amazing and remarkable. And so each one of these things, each one of these pieces of the puzzle, the Union soldiers in Unionville, the Talbot Boys statue, the Frederick Douglass statue, the hill, all woven together, is the story of a remarkable time period, painful as it was for many people, and painful as it still is for many people. But eliminating statues, and this was not my most important point, but eliminating statues doesn't change the history. It doesn't change the history that we all went through. And so I think these monuments actually help tell the story.
You know, we keep talking about Mr. Douglass. It's far from the issue. I think, you know, and I hear you saying, you gave us Frederick Douglass, maybe we should be satisfied.
I didn't get it, Richard.
Not that you're upset. That we're here to discuss today, we're here to talk about the Talbot Boys statue, not Mr. Douglass. We just need to move on from that. And I really, it disturbs me, Derek, you need to stay still.
I think you don't understand that, it's because your perception is, I gave you Frederick Douglass.
I never said that.
Well, the...
I said it was a collaborative effort that clearly took ten years and was a major accomplishment. It was the most significant event in Talbot County history.
Richard, let me...
Which I said, I don't know how you put me in the category, but I gave you X, I didn't give you anything.
It's the empujetic messages that you're putting out there.
Let me go to your second point you're making, Dave. I think that's probably more common ground with that, a commission or group that would discuss the possibility of erecting a new statue for both Union and Confederate. Again, as you and I both stated the history back in 1913, that was what a group wanted. They wanted both the Union and Confederates recognized on the courthouse ground. So perhaps that's a starting point, as I think Derek alluded to, if you already have a Confederate statue up there, why go through the cause of removing it? It's already there. The second step would be, of your point, would be to look at a statue recognizing those Union soldiers, as Mr. Black pointed out. Mr. Douglass had a lot of great attributes, he wasn't a soldier, though. He fought a bit in fights, but he didn't put on a uniform and fight as a soldier. You know, there are many other people in an abolitionist cause, you know, William Wilk Garrison, who a lot of people forget about. And I'm sorry to say, a lot of African Americans don't even know the history of William Wilk Garrison and what he did to further the fight against slavery and the fight of abolitionists around this country. And if it had not been for William Wilk Garrison, you may have not have had Douglass rise to the heights that he rose to. Garrison was a publisher, and so was Douglas. Garrison was an abolitionist, and Douglas treated Garrison as a mentor, if you go back and look at the history of it. So I agree with Mr. Black, Mr. Douglass's role was different than the soldier's role. And so perhaps that's a starting point of this discussion that took place in 1913, that we can pick it up now in 1915 and see if there's...
Twenty to twenty-two.
When did I say twenty fifteen? Twenty sixteen, and see if there's a way to do this. So let's start with that discussion, as you said before. We can back this thing back and forth. Mr. Douglass has his place in history. It's cemented. No one can argue that point, what he's done. And recognizing Union soldiers, those three hundred and thirty-four, obviously by my notes, thirty-four Union soldiers that fought bravely here in Talbot County, perhaps it's time to do that as a governmental body and publicly recognize them. So we can start the discussion from that point and move it forward, if that's agreeable to you.
Yeah.
And to your group, not asking for a decision tonight, but we're not making a decision tonight, we're just wanting to get things moving down the course of action. But I will say, looking over your shoulder, Richard, I see Bishop Joe behind you, and I will say that he met with me along with Rabbi Heinman. And we're trying to put together a community work session, if you would, around this topic and other topics dealing with race and relationships. So I wanted to note that tackle was taking a role also in furthering this discussion, and I'm glad to see that the bishop is here with us, and I understand Rabbi Heinman's other country bishop, she was out of the country at this time, so he would be here as well, so...
Excuse me, Corey, but inside your package, there's a letter of support for the NAACP from Bishop...
For Rabbi Heinman, yeah. He met with me and Bishop Joe about three weeks ago, Bishop, we sat down and met. And so we're trying to get another larger work session, if you would, at this point, where the whole public can come and take part in it. So it wasn't just between council and NAACP, but for the public at large. And so he, I want to recognize he and the bishop and the rabbi for their roles that they're taking, putting that together. And more will be coming about once we get a firm date. Bishop, I believe we're looking sometime in September?
I don't have my schedule written, but I think it's September nine, if you spoke about that. And I'll also be addressing the council in September regarding the conversation on race, which tackle has been fighting since December.
Back and forward to that as well. So if there's no further comment, we do have a second work session. I see there's something in the hallway. But Richard, I'll give you the floor for the closing comments, sir.
Just let me thank you all for your willingness to hear our side today. I do appreciate that, and we're very generous of that as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much.